Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the February 1, 2022 special meeting to order with not all of our board members present, but we have with us three plus our students. So we have a quorum here, and we'd like to begin. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Don't move. McQuarrie.
Dr. McQuarrie and trustee Patterson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please vote. Patterson?
Aye.
Let's see. Barrera has not entered yet. I don't believe. Bazo? Vice President Bazo?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Bicer's not here. Okay. Dr. McQuarrie?
Aye.
And yours truly, Whitehurst Payne, aye. So that passes unanimously with those here, which is three, zero with a concurrence from our student board member. Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to public testimony.
This is a governance meeting of the Board of Education that is conducted in public. To reduce the chance for coronavirus exposure, the Board of Education is accepting public testimony via Zoom webinar for the February 1, 2022 meeting. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. The list of public speakers is attached to item C1. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, you will be allowed to speak. Please unmute yourself at that time. If you hear your name called and are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Once all speakers have been called for the item, your name will be called again. Please unmute yourself. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. And we have two individuals who have signed up for public comment on the governance agenda.
That would be Vito Arminio and Dante Arminio. Three minutes each. They're available. Let's see. I believe that Mr. Vito Arminio.
Oh, hello. This is Vito's wife, Tracy Arminio. I'm sorry, he is not, he had to step out, so he is not available at this moment. Is this the only time during the meeting for public comment?
Yes.
That's correct.
This is a special meeting, and public comment is only taken at the very beginning.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Dante either.
He's not there.
All right. Thank you. Well, we'll close that part of the meeting, and we will move into today's business. And we'd like to say welcome to Rabbi Lori Kosky, and we want to thank her for facilitating this meeting today. This is, I don't know how many times you've done it, but at least a half dozen, it seems like, and I want to just say thank you in advance for all of your work. We do appreciate you. Rabbi Kosky.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, so much. I think it's at least probably at this point six years, maybe some of you remember that. So we've been working together a long time, and every time I have been so impressed by the commitments you make to work together as a board, always with the students right in the front of your eyes, that your commitment is to the students, and the better you work together, the better you can serve your constituent families, and particularly the students in our schools. And I myself have two bonus grandchildren in your school, so I feel for the trauma that you have been enduring. We have a, we had the COVID with our grandchildren in early January and got notices today of close calls, and you are all amazing from one grandmother's perspective. You're doing such a fine job. So I'm really honored. You gift us every day, and I'm honored to be here with you this evening, this afternoon. So we're going to go through just several items today. They're all on the agenda. I know that you have a goal of capping your meeting at 7:30, and I always think on the Zooms, boy, we could get to Chicago in that time. So maybe we could cap them, or Seattle or something. So maybe we could cap them a little, cap it a little sooner than that if we can work through and have the conversations we need to have, the discussion, to make the decisions and have the discussions we have. So are you ready to kind of go to it, or do you want to check in for a minute?
I would like to welcome Mr. Barrera. So now there are four of us here. So I'm ready. I don't see any hands. I see thumbs. Anything else I need to see? So we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. So interestingly enough, you'll read that the first item on your board agenda is the board reports and their placements on the agenda. So this is a topic that we have covered over time, the board reports and what they mean to the meeting as a whole. And so can we begin by looking at number seven? Do you all have the board superintendent best practices at your fingertips, because we're going to need them a bit? Zachary, you don't have them?
I think I do. I just, sorry, I was, I need to pull them up.
Okay. And Martha, do you want to share it? Are you able to do that? Trustee Patterson doesn't, is looking for them. Trustee Bazo, do you have them and you see them?
I'm also trying to look them up right now.
I can, what I'll do is I'll link them, and I will send them over to both trustees.
And since relatively precise, we need to sort of have that language in front of us while we're talking, because these are decisions that you made over time, trustees, that I want to see if they still function for you. And if they do function for you, are you still willing to make a commitment to sort of adhering to your own decisions? Trustee Barrera, you got it?
Yeah, I got it.
So how do you want to indicate that you all see it? And can somebody read it for us? Who has it? Trustee Barrera, do you want to read it to us? Number seven. This is the list of, I think there's nine of them. So they're historical in nature. We've revised them over time, but there are nine agreements that the Board of Trustees had made, which you believed is in the best interest of how you work together as a cohort of trustees. And so this is the seventh one. So this probably was crafted about three years ago, or two years ago. So trustee Barrera.
I have it. It's, we're going to try to screen share the board member.
I think Richard's on mute.
Richard's definitely.
Sorry, Lori, I actually thought I had them. I don't have them. Yeah, I can, I can read them.
Okay, trustee Patterson, go for it. Number seven.
Board member information reports will be limited to two minutes each, and the timer will be used. If a board member has an emerging issue that will require a report longer than two minutes, board officers must be notified in advance of the meeting. Each board member may request to provide an in-depth report of up to 12 minutes once per year on a special topic. The board officers and superintendent must be notified during the agenda planning process to ensure adequate time is available on the agenda. District-wide celebrations such as back to school should be provided in one comprehensive report rather than each board member reporting on the same items.
So you're not looking at, it's dense. There's a lot of dense things that you've agreed to. So how do you want to talk about it? And do you want to make a commitment to this, to these same agreements? Do you want to, we added the 12-minute, once a year piece of that, I think just last year. So do you want to talk about how it's going? Do you want to reflect on your reports? Does this still make sense for you? I know you, I can call on you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to reflect. Have we had a situation where board members have requested more than the two minutes over the past few months?
No, we've shared. I've heard Mike say to Sabrina, let's share.
Uh huh.
We yield a time, but I don't think we've had one.
We're very generous with our two minutes.
Oh, Marty, did you hear what Marty said?
Marty, can you repeat that?
Yes, I said, we've been very generous with our two minutes. I have not been running the timer.
I've been pretty satisfied with how it's been functioning. I felt like when we talked about this a few months ago, I think we had more of an issue. I feel like we've made a lot of progress, actually. As you said, Dr. Mike, you've done, I think, a few reports where you've paired up with other trustees.
Right. Yeah, I usually try to share, I keep, try to, attempt to stay within the two minutes or share time with another board member.
I think.
And then choose me for a video.
I think one of the other issues is the topics. We wanted to talk about the topics that are being shared.
So let's just stay with the two minutes. So Marty has said that she's not using the timer. Are you ready for her to go back to timing, and then she would give some kind of indication, polite, lovely indication?
How generous are you being, Marty?
I think pretty generous. Again, I haven't run the timer since we've been on Zoom, because it's just difficult for you all to hear when the timer goes off. But I can do that if we think we need to go back to timing.
I think the issue is more that sometimes it takes us 45 minutes to an hour to actually get to business, because our reports are dragging over a little too long and other things. So that's why we're trying to tighten up on some of that preliminary time before. So maybe we should have Marty to start going ahead and putting the timer on and then sending us a text or whatever to let us know. And say, okay, can everybody live with that?
Yeah, and maybe we could even, at the start of board information reports, you know, Sharon, you could just say, remember, we've got two minutes each, you know, something like that.
And if necessary, you're going on onto one of these nice, like.
You need to have a signal or something.
Two minutes are here. No, I won't do like this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think like Zachary, sorry, trustee Patterson was stating, I think I, at the beginning, I don't know that I knew that I only had two minutes. So I think I was going on a little longer, but I've been trying to be a lot more adhere to that, I'm trying to adhere to that. But I do think the board member, the board information reports are important, especially if we're going out to schools, because it gives us all a glimpse into what's going on, and I like to see that from other board members, and I like to share what I've been doing as well.
So there's five of you. So the board reports shouldn't take more than 10 or 12 minutes, right? Even with transitions? So if we're going to 45 minutes, it's not, Marty is being understated. It's not just that it's being generous, it's that there's a big difference between 12 or 15 minutes and 45 minutes. So let's.
No, all right. I must clarify that. When I said 45 minutes, I mean, we have the opening, we have the approval of the agenda, we have the students, we have things that we don't, that aren't on our business calendar. So that's what I meant by the time before we actually get into real business. And I think we've decided in the past that we want to keep the student piece, because that keeps us grounded. I mean, having the programs from the schools, that really keeps us grounded on what we're doing and what we're about. So if you.
Yeah, that makes more, that makes much more sense, because I was getting a little disconnected in my head around that.
I think one other thing is that folks sometimes provide a two-minute video, but then they intro the video before the video starts, so then there's an extra one or two minutes while you're telling us what's on the video. Just a thought.
And then. That's my, I do that, and I can, I can build in my intro into the video so that it's no longer than two minutes.
That'd be great.
Thank you. I love the way we're cooperating. This is going to be a brief meeting, because we're in a cooperative mood here this evening, afternoon. So thank you, just as a present.
Are we going to have board information reports tonight?
No. You don't get to practice.
So cooperators, I just, without putting a wrinkle in it, two minutes is very short. It's short for a video, and it's short for a report. Are you, do you think that you can be real in two minutes? Or do you want to be real in, say, you know, three minutes? Three minutes is the time of a public note. President Whitehurst Payne says absolutely not. Okay.
That's what I say, because you can always get time from a colleague.
You know, can, can the issue be contextualized? Like, how, how over are we actually going to some extent? I just, I do, I do see a big difference from the previous governance, from the previous governance meeting. We made the shift. I thought that got way shorter, but I just wasn't under the impression that there was really an issue, to be honest, from, in the past few months. So I just didn't know, like, is it, are we going 30 minutes? I just wasn't aware of how long it actually was, if anybody had timed it.
One of the reasons why I've been adamant that we shouldn't go much longer than two, because we have the public coming to talk to us, and we try to limit them. So with technology and all of that, you can kind of do a quick report without going into every single detail, right? I mean, quick picture that tells a big story, move on to the next, you don't have to tell every name on the picture, but, or write them out or something on the picture, because then folks can zero in and see it later. Just a thought.
I think, did we also mention about the videos from the, the school videos? Are those like 20 minutes now, and shortening that to 10 minutes? Or, because that just seems kind of a little bit long to me.
We have, trustee Bazo, we have decreased it. Also, we've worked on the transition, so that there's really a transition right to the student on a few. We've turned it over to the principal, and we, we continue to work on those. And I do think it would be helpful if we decrease those as well. Perhaps we can do a seven-minute video. So that's something, if the trustees are in agreement, we can certainly work with our schools to provide that. You know, we've had videos where, you know, multiple songs are, are being presented. We could just do a snapshot. So I can certainly work with staff on that. It is certainly a highlight to have our students, and, and we also want to work on the quality of our videos from our students, so that the public can see. And so that is something we're paying attention to. I'm going to make notes, and Sophia's done a great job of working with staff. You also may notice that we have, we used to have 10 minutes for staff presentations, and now we're between five and seven, and we work to do that, to include time for board trustee comments. But we're really trying to keep those, the staff reports to 10 minutes in total. We may go to 12 minutes, but we are certainly aligned with being effective and efficient. We want to get the message across, but we don't want to take a long time doing so.
So we've got the time. It seems like we're in agreement with the time, and we're going to stick to that. Now, there was also a, a conversation, and I think trustee Bazo, you raised it, about content and videos. And do you want to say more about that?
Are we talking about the board information report videos or the student videos?
The board.
Board information reports?
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah, I think we resolve that issue by, if we have a video that's longer in length than our portion of time, that we can share with someone else. Trustee McQuarrie and I have done that a few times now, I think, and that's worked out well. And it may even be that, I've had other board members say, hey, I have something that's going to take a little longer. Can I take up some of your time? And I'm, you know, and it's like, yeah, because I don't have anything in particular that's really specific that I need to share that evening, or, and then we can, then I might take back there two minutes another time.
Martha?
Yes, I have just a comment that if you could all please give us your videos the day before would be helpful. Sometimes we get them the afternoon of the meeting, and we just don't have time to edit or do anything to them other than just show them as you've sent. So if we could at least have them by the day before would be helpful.
And we, can we make sort of, can we add that into number seven about materials that we want shared? What do you all think would be a reasonable time, length of time to give staff to get those prepared to be shared?
That would be great.
Day before, I like. Anybody else want to comment? I like the day before.
Yeah, day before makes sense, on a Monday, if not earlier.
Yes, thank you.
So Mike, you're saying, trustee McQuarrie, you're saying by Monday, by the day before?
Yeah.
Okay. And Marty, can we add that into number seven?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So are we good with this? Does anybody want to move forward in any other way? Just we reviewed it, and we're good?
Good.
This, I want to, I like the, I know several times we go directly to the principal or to the area superintendent, and I think that's a good idea. I think sometimes as a board member, we want to say a few words before to introduce it, then we want to make comments at the end. But I'm thinking that the quicker we can get to the student, maybe the better, and then maybe have a little time at the tail end to do a board member acknowledgement, and thank you.
Yes, I think that's the way we've been handling it recently. That's good. Lamont?
Thank you. Yeah, I, we have really been working to get right to the student, and I would recommend that the board trustees' comments come at the end as well. And I, I think we should continue the practice of right to the student, or one person introducing, rather than, than three, but one person introduce the school and the presentation, and we move forward. And our preference is our students should be doing that.
Trustees?
He said it well. I think, you know, the bottom line is, we used to have the, the board member, then the area superintendent, then the principal, and then finally we'd get to the students. And now hopefully we can just go from the president introducing the principal and then right into the students. Is it good? Thumbs up for everybody who's for it.
I can add that as a number 10 to your best practices, if you would like, about student presentations and such.
So?
Yeah.
Then we have it written down.
All right, thank you. That will help remind folks. Very good.
Excellent. Excellent. So are we ready to move on to governance topic B? And we are talking about, oh, trustee Bazo.
Sorry, I had one other question about the student reports. I know we have the ASB report, or from two different schools usually, and then we have the ASB president of all the ASBs. Does she still speak at all the meetings? And because she wasn't at the, she didn't speak at the last one, so I wasn't clear on whether she was still going to be speaking at every single meeting.
Well, the intention was never for her to speak about her school at every meeting.
Right.
The intention is for her to update us on what's happening across the district.
Right.
And so she, we should have the schools, the individual schools who come, plus the district-wide presentation. Sometimes they'll farm it out and just give us two schools directly, which is fine, but we should not be hearing from the school of the president at every board meeting. That's not appropriate.
We will remind ASB of that as well.
Yes.
Yeah, just, just some context. The way that works is, they put out a registration form at the beginning of the year, and they say, choose the night that you want, and there's more nights than there are ASB presidents. So naturally, the council president gets the fun job of filling every single spot that is not taken. So that is how it usually ends up to where that person comes more than everyone else. But some nights, in that case, if there's not an opening, then they won't attend.
Right. And it used to be, it seemed like sometimes we would even have, in the old days, three people with a council president there every night. Whichever way, if the council president is there and they've reported for their school for that year, then we'd like to hear about what's going on across the district, because they're meeting monthly at least, and there should be some information that they can bring to us about what's happening in schools across the district, and what policies, what they're discussing in their council, which is paralleling what we're doing. So, okay, did that answer your question, Sabrina?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And how are you going to sort of reflect what you all were just talking about? Because it sounded like some governance policy implications here.
I'm going to add that to the best practices.
Okay. Does that work?
That's how we get rules and regs. We add and we add, but I think it will help clarify. Okay. Thank you.
So now we can move on to B, which is the code of civil discourse, and I'm going to invite trustees Barrera and Whitehurst Payne to introduce this item to us.
I yield to my, my colleague.
All right, I don't know what this item is, President Whitehurst Payne.
Richard, this is the code of civil discourse from the NCRC.
Oh, I'm sorry. This goes back to, yeah, no, no, I.
Expectations for audience conduct, I think.
So we, yeah, a couple of months ago, we introduced our intention to adopt the National Conflict, the National Center, National Center for Conflict Resolutions Code of Civil Discourse that they're hoping to, that other local government agencies in San Diego County will pick up. And so, but what we identified was that we couldn't simply adopt the code at a board meeting. It was more proper to bring this to this, this discussion, the board governance discussion. So that's what we're doing now. I think we've all had a chance to review the, the code. I think the questions, you know, Marty, that you had identified were really around what happens when somebody is violating the code? You know, how do we, how do we, how do we deal with that? So I suppose that's what we want to discuss now here at, here at governance.
Who is somebody referencing? Is that us, or is that the public, or is that, what's the relationship?
Well, I think the code refers to both the conduct of board members and the conduct of public speakers.
I think Andre would like to make a comment.
Thanks. I was just going to comment that I'm not sure that I would interpret it that way. When I read it, I wondered why we were talking about public comment when it appeared more geared to board members only. So if we want to have it geared toward members of the public as well, certainly I can tweak that for you, but then I would caution that we have to be careful on when we censor people and how we censor people.
Yeah, it would be good if we had a copy of the code that we could bring up.
Oh, I don't think we do.
Is that code 54957.9?
It is.
Going to ask as well, I don't know when it went out, but I don't recall seeing it, but if I, maybe I looked at it and don't remember.
I'll paste it in an email for all of you right now.
Let me see if I can pull it up on my screen.
Okay.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
I think it's coming up as Board of Education office and I can read it to you.
Yeah.
It says, it's codified the board's belief that the respectful and constructive airing of different points of view is critical to successful dialogue. The board will engage in respectful and constructive civil discourse that promotes an inclusive environment where diverse perspectives are shared and considered, will listen attentively and ask questions to understand each other's positions, will show respect for ideas and views presented even when there is disagreement, explain positions by fairly presenting them and the reasons for them, and avoid personal attacks or other tactics that distract attention from the salient issues.
Okay. So, yeah, so Andre, I think you're then correct that there's nothing in this policy which really talks about public comment?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And I would say that we can do something, but I think it's going to have to be somewhat limited in, in the language to be able to expect the same of the public and encourage the public to abide by these principles. It's really going to come down to the implementation during a meeting and whether someone is, if someone's just rude, there's not a lot we can do, we can't censor them. When it comes to hate speech or inciting disruptions, then we're at the same point that we, we've always been, that we can always stop that person from speaking. We've never actually escorted anyone out of a meeting. And so I don't know, don't know that that's something that we wanted to consider, but I'm happy to draft something that I think would encourage the public to engage in civil discourse and to be polite and fair. And that doesn't walk the line over the First Amendment right of free speech.
But Andre, we have had to close some meetings because we, folks weren't participating with that code. I mean, they were yelling and shutting down the meeting. So I think if we have something on record that really legitimizes our rationale for being able to at least have the meeting, I think that's what they were getting at, don't you, Richard?
Yeah, it's obviously, you know, I think NCRC is looking at the present context of the way that people have approached other public agencies and conducted themselves and, and, and public comment. Or not even in public comment, but you know, in, you know, not allowing for people to speak, you know, you know, shouting, you know, being disruptive during the meetings. So, yeah, I think, I think the intention of the NCRC code is to speak to both the way that the elected officials conduct themselves, but also the, the way that the public conducts itself.
We do have language in the bylaws on expectations for audience conduct. Maybe Andre would like to suggest some additional language for that, for that bylaw?
Yeah, I will and I'll, we'll bring it forward at the next public meeting for the board to adopt.
Great.
Okay. That's a good answer.
Yeah, and then in terms of how the board conducts itself, again, I mean, I, you know, I, I think it's been a long time since we've had examples where board members, I think, have kind of violated these principles, either towards each other or towards members of the public.
Kind of.
So I, you know, I don't, I don't think this is an issue, you know, that we've had to deal with so much with this board. So I don't know if we want to spend some time talking about, you know, what happens if a board member starts to violate these principles. It's happened, it just hasn't happened in, you know, in, in, I think, a pretty long time.
But didn't we deal with this kind of when we were talking earlier about the superintendent would get involved with board members speaking to one another? Don't we have in place in our policy what would happen if a, a board member gets out of line? And I don't know that we need to duplicate it or just segue this into that kind of arena.
We do for other issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we could simply incorporate this into the procedure that we have for other issues. For example, when we adopted those, we were talking about board interference with staff, giving direction to staff. And so certainly wouldn't be a major overhaul of the bylaws to put that in there and tie them together with the new code.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense. I think, I think though, the question really is about in, in the meeting, you know, during the meeting, if we had a situation where, you know, a board member was crossing the line, how do we want to handle, you know, that situation? And again, I know that, you know, Andre, you know, board members also have rights of free speech and, you know, there's, but do we, for instance, want, you know, the board president to remind, you know, remind us of the code? Do we want to post the code, you know, publicly at our meetings so that we can refer back to it? In, in a way that's similar to a lot of us participate in meetings where we have ground rules or, you know, some other term for it that we, you know, that we put up on the wall and then, you know, the people, you know, can see those during the meeting. I think that, I, I would recommend that that, you know, would be something that we might want to do. We might want to post this code visibly, you know, at each meeting. And then if it happened that the president needed to refer back to it, you know, it's, it's right there.
What about virtual?
How would we do that virtually? I'm not sure. Yeah.
Anyway, that's something for us to think about. I'm sure it can be done.
Yes, we'll work on how to make sure that it's available widely to the public if that's what you want to adopt. You do have also in your governance documents, board members' code of conduct. So there is language already available about how you all treat each other.
Right.
Very good. So we will look forward to hearing Andre, I mean, Mrs. Green bringing something back to us at a future board meeting.
And posting.
Yes. Okay. And put something up on the walls and virtually so that we can at least know what we're supposed to be doing and adhere to it. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more to say about this? Then let us move on to an exciting item, which is the purchase of software for student trustee elections. And I'm going to give this item to trustee Patterson to introduce us and tell us what we are considering.
Perfect. Thank you, Robikowski. So I'm actually not going to ask quite yet for us to purchase the software. We were, or in speaking, I had put forth, I had knew of a company from other student board member elections and the staff had looked into that and that's still an ongoing process. So I'm not going to ask that we move forward on that quite yet. What I was hoping is that we can just establish our intent for that. And I wanted to kind of go over a few things. One of the things I talked about with the superintendent was, it's obviously an interesting situation because I want to play an active role, but I'm also a trustee on the board. So it's important that I strike that balance between, especially because I put forward this myself, I've worked on it so long, I do definitely have an attachment to it, a vested stake, but I also have to recognize the balancing act that I do need to play. So what I've asked to do and what I'm hoping we can go forward tonight is to put some parameters around what this election looks like and what we have currently. And I know I went over that with Dr. Jackson. So the reason it's at a governance meeting rather than, say, just a proposal that we would be voting on at a board meeting is because there are a few discussion points and some things that we want to go over. So I have a list of just six different bullet points regarding the student trustee election that I wanted us to cover and kind of just, as I said, set those parameters that will give the superintendent kind of some framework that he can move forward with that. So my first one on the list, I'd, I'd like us to consider for our student board member election, having our eligibility age for voting to be middle and high school students rather than simply just, simply just high school. I think we should allow middle and high school students in accordance with what multiple other districts do in the state of California and is a common practice nationwide.
Have this on in writing?
One more time?
Do you have it in writing that you're going to screen share?
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to put that up on the, on the screen right now. Let's see. For sure. Yeah, so just lowering the voting eligibility age to include all of middle school, sixth through 12th graders can vote in the election. So just that one, I wanted to check to see if there were any of how the trustees felt about that.
Currently it's only 10 through, I guess it's nine through 12?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're bringing sixth, seventh, eighth graders in.
Happy to provide some rationale as well if that would be helpful.
And can you remind me of one thing? I don't know how recently all of you have thought about this, but it's basically that you have to be a high school student in order to run for an office, run for this seat?
Yeah, it's a, a student in high school gets to run for the seat, correct?
Okay, so now we're allowing the middle school children to vote for this candidate, whoever it is.
Yeah.
A high schooler. I mean, that parallels what happens in, for the president and all of that. You have to be a certain age, but then you can vote for them even if you're 18 years old, even though you can't be president. So in that sense, if it's, if it's manageable and we get it electronically done, then I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself.
I, I think it's a great idea and I, I think, you know, the point is that the student board member is representing, you know, the interests of students. And when we say that, we don't think of only high school students. So I think the student, elected student board member has a responsibility to younger students. And so I think, you know, at least as a first step, you know, moving this to middle school students being able to vote, I think makes sense. I think what we of course would have to make sure is that middle school students have the same access to information about the candidates and information about the election itself, you know, that high school students have. So if, so if candidates are presenting videos or, you know, in different ways, you know, presenting information about themselves and their candidacy, we just want to make sure that, that extends to middle school students so that they've got access to the same information.
Definitely, yeah. One of the later things I'm going to bring up is kind of discussing what that looks like in terms of us, as much as I can in setting parameters, talking about that aspect. So that was what we were looking at on that one.
Well, I'll move that recommendation if that's where we're at in the process.
Trustee Barrera, I don't think you can.
Okay.
The statute that allows for student board members states that the student board member shall be elected from the high school students.
Yeah, but I didn't see that precluded us from being able to have middle school students. I mean, I can think of numerous instances where that does happen in other districts. And I know you can't speak for other school boards, but what specifically precludes it? I think about, I think about all of our neighboring districts, actually, all of which include a process where adults actually help screen out the student before they're actually chosen. So I would, I would ask what specific, on what specific grounds that's the case?
Well, when the legislature writes a statute and they say shall, they mean shall, not might, not may. They mean shall be elected by the high school students. It doesn't allow for the inclusion of other students. That would be contrary to what the statute says.
And it's by and not from?
It can read it for you.
Okay.
Shall be chosen by the pupils enrolled in the high school or high schools of the district in accordance with policies and procedures prescribed by the governing board.
Okay.
I mean, all I can speak to is the majority of districts in the state of California that use a policy that is a hybrid system of that. So I would, you know, I'd ask this to consider that, but we go back and we, rather than killing it right now, I'd like to discuss that because I can, I can tell you the majority of school districts use a, a different process. So I would say if the, would you say from that statute that the Board of Education is allowed to choose the student member?
No.
No? Okay, interesting.
I mean, in the example that I gave earlier about how the president is chosen, he must be, I think is 35, 40 years old in order to run for president, but 18-year-olds vote for the president. But if it states that it shall be chosen by and not from the high school students, then I think that's a different matter and we need some resolution on that legality. Any discussion from other board members on that?
Well, is it something we can have Enrique work on? Is there something we can work with with our legislature to amend it?
Yeah, I think the point is that it does need some more work overall before we can attempt to vote on it tonight. We need some clarification.
Is this that, and you said it was statewide, in the state guidelines for policies?
Could you repeat?
That Andre was reading from?
Could you repeat that?
Sorry, I was just trying to get clarification. Was that a district policy that she was reading or is that a statewide policy that Andre was reading from?
That was the education code, section 35012.
I don't know what that, what that is. Is that state or local?
State, sorry. It's the education code for the state. It is the statute that provides for the student board member, provides that the student board member gets preferential voting. And so that's what we relied on when we created the position to begin with. Can't speak to what other districts do or whether they've had some other process outside the code. But our board member, student trustee has to follow that section. And so I know we have, you know, we have ASB presidents that speak at our meetings, but they wouldn't have the same kind of right to preferential voting and things of that nature that come with the statute.
May I, may I, may I recommend something here? One of the things that trustee Patterson and I have spoken about is the idea of having an electronic system that's much more aligned to how other board members are elected or some process. I think there may be some components that trustee Patterson and I can work with, work on like this. Things that follow the statute, follow the laws. We can do a little bit more work and bring that back. But I do think trustee Patterson, if it's okay with you, perhaps we get the, the collective views around perhaps us working on a bid process to seek out a, a company that can help us really be much more efficient and effective around the actual electing of the board trustee. So there may be some, some things that, that you want to see differently that we may need to work on before we come back to the governing board. But maybe there is something that we can take action on this evening, but that would be a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, so keep in mind, there are, yeah, there are five other things that we're discussing. I would ask that we go to the California School Boards Association and speak to them because I would like to, I would just like to point out, every single one of our neighboring school districts does not use a process of a direct election. And I do have to point out that while I respect and I hear what you are saying, I cannot forget that and that does not pass me. I mean, I run, I'm part of an association where we have over 60 student board members with different processes. I see those play out. I see how they work. So I would ask that we seek further context from an organization like the California School Boards Association, or we seek clarification from the legislature on that provision.
And I think that's what I'm suggesting, that there may be some more work that we can do before we have this discussion here. That's what I'm hearing.
And I think we can always bring it to the board as an item, a board item. It doesn't only have to be decided today, but the point is that we, if we don't have the. the, the facts on this, and, um, we do have the code, education code, because our attorney has given us that, but these other variables that you're talking about, I think we need to, to pin them down a little bit more. And if we've gotten some clearer direction, can always come to the, uh, officers and see if we can bring an item to the board at that time. Is everybody in agreement with that? So, tonight, I don't think we can, uh, resolve it one way or the other, because we have the code, and that's speaking mildly right now. We just need to have some clarification. And I, I like what the superintendent is saying about working with, uh, the student trustee longer to figure out what's going on and how we can facilitate this.
Are, are we able, President Whitehurst Payne, to hear the other five components so that the trustees are aware of, um, what Trustee Patterson is? So, he can share them, and then we can, um, proceed in, in trying to figure out how we best move forward?
Absolutely. I just don't want us to get into a mode of wanting to vote for that one and each one as we go through them.
Right.
But I think we need to hear what they are. So, yes.
Righty, well, on, on that nice note, we'll go to our next controversial one. My second proposal, and this is coming out of, once again, procedure used effectively in other school districts. Looking at mandating voting for all students in grade nine through 12 during a pre-specified class period, uh, students could cast a blank ballot, but they would need to vote. And I want to provide some context on this. In our last elections, we've seen pretty low voter turnout. We've seen below 10%. And what we see in other districts that move towards doing this, I look at Montgomery County as a, a great example of a school district that does this. They get extraordinarily high voter turnout, so students that choose to participate, they have, their student board member was elected two years ago with 89,000 votes, a pretty, uh, incredibly high number for a student election. And what it does is, it really encourages and says to students, "I need to take this seriously. I need to understand the legislative process to see how it works, and I need to know what it looks like for who I'm going to vote for." And the biggest component of it is, in the end, you can submit a blank ballot. You don't have to vote, you don't have to vote for someone specifically, but the point of moving in a direction in this manner would be to say, as a, as a school board, we value and we see the importance of the democratic process, and we see that this role can make a meaningful difference. And we know that students do need to be civically minded and participate in this. And why I would suggest we do this is to set that foundation. While in future years, I think you create a habit of voting, you create, you create a situation to where it's successful, and you see people are coming back, and I think that's a different discussion. But in a stage where we are now, where we're moving something like this in, and we really need people to see it and understand it, I would suggest that we look at considering a mandate saying that all schools do need to have their students vote in the election.
Trustee Patterson, um, recognizing the, uh, little awkward silence, I think, um, what, what I'm suggesting is that you just go ahead and run through your points so that the board trustees have them.
Yes.
But I know we, I know we spoke, I know the plan was I would go through them and we would discuss them as a, I mean, the first, just because the first one wasn't that, wouldn't mean we would change the process for the remainder, is that, or are you thinking?
I'm, I'm, I, I will yield to the president, but I thought you would introduce, and then we would do some work outside of this session, but I'm going to yield to the process.
No, 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 I think you're right. What we want to hear is all of them, and then, just like we do any other presentation, and then we'll come back if there, we want to discuss specific ones. Board members know how to isolate which ones they want to discuss, and then, um, we can do that. But for now, I, I heard the second one now. So, can we just go through all of them, and then we'll, I'm sorry, I'm taking over your role, uh, our facilitator here, Dr. Koski, Rabbi Koski.
Well, you're the president, so you get to decide on these things. I am only going to help the conversation along, so.
Okay, I want to hear them all. I would like for us to hear all of them, whatever they are.
Great. All right, our third one, codify that we have a jungle primary followed by a general runoff election. Currently, our policy states that we have, uh, an election by students. We don't really specify what that looks like specifically. I'm suggesting that we do specify that formal election process. So, codifying a gen, or a, a jungle primary followed by runoff election, the same format that all of you are elected in. The fourth one, the division for an interactive process, where the top two candidates visit schools across the district over a multi-day process to meet with students and share their vision for the district. Fourth one would be establish the intent to allocate funds around $20,000 for the operation and election, including the hiring of an elections company. This was the estimate that the elections company already gave us. So, this is the election, this is the estimate that I'm bringing forth. We've looked at that with the board office, we just didn't want to approve that software tonight. And then, six one was direct the superintendent to work with the student board member to develop a legitimate credible, credible and well-known election process from the parameters that we've set forth this evening.
Okay, and, uh, under five, that is 20,000 rather than 200,000, so.
Thank you, I'm, I'm so sorry about that. That's me, that's me typing incorrectly, since I wasn't expecting to share my screen, I made these notes for myself.
That's okay, I, I do better when I can see it. Uh, so, can you put that back up?
Yeah, for sure.
That, that term you used about jungle, uh, jungle primary, was it?
Yeah, I cha, I actually checked that. A jungle primary is where the top two candidates, anybody can run, and then the top two candidates advance.
And that's everybody out there running, and then finally we get it down to the top two, and like a runoff like we do now for, uh, any governmental position, uh, in the primaries, okay? That's good. Did you all learn anything today? It's called the jungle primary.
Good, regarding the jungle runoff, could it also incorporate the notion that if any one candidate gets 50% plus one, there's no need for a runoff?
That's how we've done it the past two years. That is the current way that we do it. Um, I was, I was kind of indecisive on what my preference was, just for the fact that I don't think it's any, is it 50% for all of you, or is it for a prime, uh, runoff regardless? So, runoff regardless. So, probably on that notion, I'm for the fact that this position should be in every single manner as close as possible to a board member, so I would lean towards a, a runoff, but I, I don't feel strongly about that if others do.
In the past, we've had a, a unique system that it didn't matter if you got, uh, 50% plus one in the primary, because it was only in your, uh, sub-districts, and then you had to run citywide. Now, for the first time, we'll be going only in our district. So, I think the general thinking, and, uh, Trustee Barrera, you can help me with this, but the general thinking was that you don't have as many people participating in the primary as you do in the general, so that you would have to go forward anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, you know, so we've seen reform at the, uh, city and county governments over the past, uh, few years in San Diego precisely for that reason, uh, you know, to make sure that the largest number of, uh, you know, people can participate in the election. So, um, so that's why there's an automatic runoff, and it's, it's the same thing in the, in the state legislature, an automatic runoff, uh, regardless of, i- if, if one candidate gets more than 50% in the primary. I'm okay with that.
I, I must say that I, I kind of like the number two at the second part, um, well, that students must vote, because we're training folks for our larger society, and if we've gone through that process with our students, so then they would understand the importance of us having to vote in our regular election after they're 18 years old. And, uh, in society, maybe that would help us some with, um, the lethargy that we experience as a society with folks not voting.
Hi, President Whitehurst Payne, I just, the, I, I, I think it's a good point. Um, I worry about enforcement of number two. So, what happens if a student does not cast a vote in the election?
I would say that nothing, probably. I think we would just say, "You need to do this," and I don't, I don't think we would attach anything to it. I don't know if anyone else, that's how I felt at least.
I agree with that. You're trying to encourage the, uh, majority of the students to understand that, and I think that does raise a question, Trustee Barrera, about individual teachers, if they want to, um, during a particular period of year, social studies teacher or, uh, history teacher, and you want to say, "This is something that we're going to do, and your grade in part depends upon this," or, I don't know how they would do it at that end, but I don't think we could enforce it beyond that point, because it's not, we, we're not, I don't want to say communistic, or we're not regimented to the extent that we say that folks, that something terrible is going to happen to them if they don't vote. Although it does turn out that way a lot, get the wrong candidate.
Yeah, so then, the, I think, I think there are potential issues that would arise, though, and I, and I think, I think you just identified something, you know, President Whitehurst Payne, because let's say in one class, a teacher does look at this and say, "It's a mandate, and I'm going to enforce it," and, you know, for instance, you know, I'm going to attach, you know, issues to a student's grade, or, uh, some other means of enforcing it, but it's not enforced consistently across the district. I, I can imagine, as, you know, a student who would be penalized, coming forward and saying, "How come I got penalized, you know, in, in my grade, for instance, because I didn't vote, but I know 10 other students who also didn't vote, and they didn't get penalized?" So, I just, I worry that whenever we, um, use a term like mandate, I, that by definition there's gotta be, i- if it's a mandate, there has to be enforcement. And if there's not, and I agree that I wouldn't want to see, you know, uh, any of those kinds of, uh, you know, enforcement, um, mechanisms being used, but I think if we call it a mandate, and then it's enforced inconsistently, I think we're setting ourselves up for problems. Um, so I, you know, I, I absolutely think we should do everything we can to encourage, you know, all students to vote, um, but, you know, I would point out that in this country, voting is not mandatory, and, um, you know, it's, I, I, I think if we were, if we're going to use the term mandate, um, I just don't see how we do that without some enforcement mechanism, and as soon as we talk about enforcement mechanisms, I think we're all going to get uncomfortable and see that there are problems. So, I, I, the, the goal of getting, you know, students to vote, I think is a, is an important goal, um, I just wouldn't use the term mandate.
Okay, others want to weigh in on it? Trustee Plaza?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Trustee Barrera, I, I wanted to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I was, I was concerned with similar, uh, issues, as you mentioned, um, you know, and because we make it mandatory, doesn't necessarily mean people are going to take it seriously. I mean, they may or they may not, and, um, I feel like also if you're saying, you know, you have to vote, it's, couldn't, could be seen more as like a dis, or punishment to some kids, like, ah, you know, I have to vote. So, somehow twisting it around to make it more positive, or rather than mandated, but something more positive, like an incentive, I, I mean, I know we can't give them anything, but I don't know, something to make it more of a positive thing rather than as a, you know, kind of more of a discipline thing that we're forcing them into doing, doing this, because, um, I, you know, I, I know people, some people will not take to, to that kindly. Um, and also with regard to allocating funds for the election, um, I just know, because I did tech banking when I was running for office, that the, and I may be off, but I just think for one election that we're going to do a year, the 20K seems a little bit high to me. Um, there might be, uh, other things I'm not thinking about, but if we could get something that's a little lower and utilize some of those funds for like what Zachary, I like the idea of the candidates being able to go around the district, but that could cost money, so maybe put a little, push a little more money towards that piece, and, you know, I, I, I just think that 20K amount seems, seems high for, like I said, doing one election a year.
Yeah, that included everything, as you brought up. That was, that was kind of a, because the original estimate came out at about 15 for the software, so that additional five was just as what you discussed, everything else that would come with it. I was also surprised at what the pricing was, but in looking at other companies to kind of have the election security, that was kind of what it looked like.
And I would just say to that point about must vote and all of that, uh, as a teacher, I would make it a requirement right off the bat, wouldn't bat an eyelid, and say, "Your teacher is Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I'm not Mrs. Smith or Mrs. Jones over here, and I want you guys to experience this, so let's do it." I mean, it's not a big issue in that sense, but I do understand what you're saying about mandatory means mandatory. So, to put "should," it's fine with me, because it would be a requirement if I were teaching history, the social studies or whatever, just because I want them to experience it, and to show them it's not painful, which is the perception that we have, a lot of folks have now, that, "Oh, I don't want to vote, it's too much trouble." It's not, it's painless. Yes, Trustee Patterson?
Yeah, de- definitely. I, I will say, so, every principal was notified of the student board member election, it was put in the principal's bulletin, it was advertised on social media, it was sent out to so many people, and it was still an incredibly low voter turnout in the end. And I do think it is important to recognize that that's, we're not doing the best we can if that's what's happening. And whether it's what Trustee Bazo brought up, if, let's make it positive, let's find a way to do that, but I guess what we do know is, I guess we can say mandates work. We've seen, we've, as a board, we've seen that mandates have worked in the past, uh, there is enforcement to that, obviously, as you brought up, and I, I see the issue with the challenge of what are you in, what are you enforcing? But I would, I would still say telling principals, "You need to make sure your students vote." I think that would be a realistic ask, and if we even wanted to put some parameters around that, asking the superintendent to maybe look into, "How can we do this without infringing or anything?", maybe that would be a beneficial way to do this.
Yeah, I kind of see this as in, uh, civics learning, and, and how we can make civics learning, uh, more robust and, um, um, and, and more of a part of the, um, of a meaningful experience for students. I like the word like, um, Richard used, encourage. Um, we could encourage schools, um, to, uh, engage in the election of the, uh, student school board representative. Um, I'm not, uh, I'm wondering that it's not equitable, or maybe it's not, uh, if students across the district don't have the same opportunity to vote, uh, or to participate. Uh, I'm not sure how the election took place, if it was maybe set up in the, you know, um, who, how they voted, maybe it was in a particular class, or it was in a booth set up around the campus, or it was at lunch, um, so I'm not sure. And I'm, I'm wondering what can we do to encourage and to support, and maybe it's part of civic learning, and maybe the schools could incorporate something within their, uh, their school plan.
I think I saw Rabbi Koski's hand, and I, then I want to comment on, on your point about equity in, across the district, yes.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne, why don't you make that comment first, and then I'll talk after you do?
Okay, thank you. I, I was just going to say, you just triggered, I, I spoke to some of the students at, um, Moore's High School and maybe Crawford, anyway, a couple of schools after this last election, because apparently a couple of them were running or interested in the whole pos, process, and they were just kind of disgusted at, at the end, and, uh, I think it was a sophomore or somebody who was running, and she said, "Oh, I don't want to be involved in that anymore." And I was, I And I was, I don't know, I just had the feeling that maybe, as you said, Dr. McQuarrie, there was something about access, and students feeling like we didn't have access. And that's one of the reasons why I would support Trustee Patterson's point about finding a way that would just kind of level the playing field. I don't really know what happened, but they were very, it was kind of a negative comment that just really turned them off. And I thought, this is a perfect solution to, at least get something that's uniform across the district, in terms of the actual voting process. So, thank you, Rabbi Koski.
I just wanted to take a moment for all of us to sort of note this conversation. This is a very different conversation than we had in the years before we had a student trustee. And so Zachary, I think you've brought so much change, Trustee Patterson, pardon me, I think you have brought so much change, and you've expanded the way that we think about what's possible. I know that you have had, are now enjoying your second term of service, and you're moving on, and I may not see you again. So I wanted to just share with all of you that this is a conversation that obviously cannot be resolved this evening, but a conversation that puts things on the table that we have not discussed in depth before. And so thank you, Trustee Patterson, for all of your service, and for continuing now, even though it's the spring semester of your senior year. You could already have turned your attentions elsewhere, and you are still so intensely engaged. And so we are a richer school district, altogether, because of having caught your attention and the work that you've done with us.
Thank you. I think--
Thank you. That's so kind, that is so kind of you, I appreciate that, Rabbi Koski. As she mentioned, you know, I'm just bringing these forward, because, I mean, just the other portion, if you don't know my, as if this isn't my job itself, I'm also the president of the California Student Board Member Association. And I run a group that is working to create a national student board member association. So in my interactions with about over 150 different student board members across the United States, I see, I see a lot. I see a lot of different methods. And what do I want? I want San Diego Unified to be the best. I want us to have the best students, the strongest civic engagement. I want us to beat DC public schools. I want us to beat Montgomery County. I want, I want that for us, and that's always what I'm fighting for. So everything I bring forward is just a measure of what I've seen to get us to get there.
A question, is there a time constraint here? Because we'll be going into the election of next year's school board representative. When does that election take place? And is there something that needs to be decided soon, in order to improve or make that election process more successful?
Trustee Patterson?
Yeah, Dr. Jackson, you're right, sorry. That's your point.
I do think it would be helpful if the board wanted to take action to provide a space where we could go out and use our strategic sourcing process to put this item out, so that we can find a vendor who could run the election process. I believe that's the action we need to take. There are six points that were made. I think we need to talk more about that with our general counsel. I think we need to be in alignment with the ed code. I think we need to perhaps come back in open session and have a broader discussion around the parameters of the implementation. But I think the timeframe is critical for us to put this out to bid and get a contract. So that's what I would ask the school board this evening to take action on, and some of the nuances and the details of application of the process. I would certainly ask that we bring it back into a more discussion after I'm able to talk to Trustee Patterson, and the board officers and officers meeting. I think that would be appropriate next steps.
Is the 15K for the software a one-time purchase?
So--
Even that needs to be--
Dr. Mike, what I would ask is my ability to work with strategic sourcing. I don't think we should put a number on it, per se, but I understand Trustee Bazlo's point. I heard Trustee Patterson also say, we're working within a frame. But I would allow the staff, who is able to do this, to do the research, and provide the best vendor to take the appropriate course of action. That's what I would do. I don't know that the board now would be taking action on a specific dollar amount.
I think my point is that it sounds like three-fourths of the total amount is in the initial purchase of software, whereas one-fourth is the ongoing operation. Is that pretty much--
Well, I think in talking to Trustee Patterson, we make a note, this was one school district, I believe, who used this company. I think we have some more work to do. And I don't know that I have a dollar amount that I could say to the school board, here's what I'm asking for. But also, I wouldn't necessarily say that the board would need to do that. As a superintendent, I have the ability to put out that, and then bring it on a consent agenda item, for the board to take action on. And so I am just asking the board to approve the item, to say, yes, we need to move for a more electronic process for electing a school board member, a student school board member. And then I will take it from here, work with strategic contracting, strategic sourcing, to put a contract, or put a bid out, get a contract, put it on the consent agenda, and bring it forward to the board to take action at a subsequent board member meeting.
I'll move that. And I don't know if we can do in one motion, but also, I think the last suggestion, and Trustee Patterson's list of recommendations, was that he worked with the superintendent to come back to the board, laying out the process by which the student board member will be elected, certainly, you know, this spring. And that, and that process comes back to us, obviously, in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Do we have a second on that? Vice President Bazlo, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on it? Otherwise, we'll go for a vote. Let's go with you, Trustee Patterson. Trustee Barrera.
Aye.
Vice President Bazlo.
Aye.
Trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
And yours, truly, Whitehurst Payne, I don't think Pfizer ever came in. He's not, okay. So I vote, I also, so that passes four, zero, and then the board student concurs with that motion. Is that okay, Mr. Patterson?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So this is good. Thank you for the way you articulated that, Dr. Jackson. I think that is the appropriate next step. And thank you, Trustee Patterson, for bringing it forward, because it does answer some questions, and we will have some answers for all of us. Thank you. And with that--
Great conversation. And with that, we're going to move on to a, our next item on the agenda, it's item D. And we're going to talk about the compositions of our advisory committees. And I would like to invite Dr. Jackson to introduce us to this item, and share his thoughts.
Thank you, Rabbi Koski. I'm sorry, are we on D, or are we jumping to E?
D is composition of advisory committees, on my agenda. But you may, but the agenda may have been reordered. Marty?
Correct. The next item is a composition of advisory committees, but on one document, I have its item number six. So--
Okay. I will follow, I will follow Rabbi Koski. What's the agenda item? I was on, I was on the composition, but are, are we on E? Or I should say--
On composition of advisory committees.
I'm looking for, I'm looking at Rabbi Koski for direction here.
Composition of advisory committees.
Thank you. So Rabbi Koski, I think this was an item that President Dr. Whitehurst Payne wanted to introduce and bring forward, in terms of the makeup of our advisory committees. And really, what she has brought to our attention in open meetings, is that the membership of said committees, like the CAC, or the DAC, or D-LAC, that we actually have representative members that reflect the district's student population. And I know this is covered in our governance document. And also, it's important to note that general counsel has weighed in on this. And the challenge of restricting committee members simply on demographic information is not something that we can do. So I want to introduce it to the board, in this setting, to have a discussion. That has been brought forward in open session, in different meetings, by President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Dr. Whitehurst Payne, do you want to say anything about this one, specifically your thoughts, when we're talking about the makeup of committees?
Yes, I'm not, diversity is not only racial and ethnic, it's interest. I've always said north of eight and south of eight. And to be fair about it, it's SES, it's socioeconomic status also. And that's been one of my big concerns recently, as demonstrated in the recent Title I reports and the advisory panel. The fact that, in the last presentation, we had to do some things in order to ensure that the most, the students who need the services the most, who are often from the south of eight. And I know that the code doesn't say anything about south of eight versus north. The policy doesn't say anything about that. But we need to ensure, as a district, that we're not doing a miscarriage of justice by not fairly representing those students who need the services, by allowing those who are not in need of the services as much, to dictate to those who need it. So I'm not talking about whether or not you have one African American, or three Latinx, or two whoever, whatever. I'm talking about the socioeconomic status of those children in districts D and E, being fairly represented with their needs. Because we had, we had, I believe it was really from your area, Richard, Trustee Barrera, two schools spoke up and said, hey, this is, this is not working for us. Whatever's going on, something is wrong. They happen to be from Lincoln Cluster, but they are in District D, as far as voting is concerned. So they gave me an email, and we got on top of it and said, hey, what's going on here? And as a result, we found that there were some issues, related to the mere fact that they never would have allowed, if they'd had a representative from those schools on that committee, they would have said, this isn't right, let's stop and take a look at it, before it got all the way to the board. That's what I'm talking about when I say diversity. Mr. Barrera, Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, no, I think this is a really important issue, and I thank President Whitehurst Payne for bringing it forward. And it's been an issue that's been with us for a long time. So, you know, if we take the DAC, for instance, that is our advisory committee on compensatory education, Title I, the, we've had an issue for certainly the entire time that I've been on the board, where the makeup of the DAC has been lacking in representatives from schools with higher percentages of, you know, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, for instance. And, and that has led to issues. I mean, I, you know, I'll just say, you know, as a single board member, when the DAC has come with recommendations to redo the allocations of Title I, that would result in less money going to schools with high percentages of students with free and reduced lunch, and more money going to schools with lower percentages, the first thing that I look at is, are the voices of schools with high percentages of free and reduced lunch being heard in the DAC? Who's this recommendation coming from? And, and, and so what it does is, it strains, I think, what could be an effective, you know, relationship between the DAC and the board, because it puts the board in a position where we're not necessarily sympathetic to the recommendations coming forward from the DAC, because we feel the DAC is not properly representative. And I would say that the leadership of the DAC consistently, over, you know, the time that I've been on the board, has recognized this as an issue, and has understood that there needs to be, you know, more efforts to increase representation, you know, first on school side councils, and then, you know, on the DAC itself. But I do think it's a real issue. And so if we think about, you know, for instance, the makeup of, you know, the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee on the bond measure, that lays out, you know, it calls, it calls for representatives that represent certain stakeholder groups, you know, or certain perspectives. So, you know, we expect on the ICOC to have people with expertise in construction, to be, have people with expertise in finance, you know, you go through that. And so I think I would be interested, for instance, in, you know, incorporating into the structure of the DAC, something that says, X number of members of the DAC should represent schools at a 40% threshold, and then X number at a 70% threshold, and, you know, something, something on that order. Because it's laying out that we want to see that diversity of perspectives, you know, represented. And I think, I think if we could build that into the structure of the DAC, so that when we appoint members to the DAC, they're hitting these different categories, I think that can be helpful. We still have to do the work, you know, to recruit perspectives who are represented.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes, and I agree there. I think we're talking about composition. I would also suggest that what we're talking about is, how do we coach and train up committees to do a full 360 view? And that includes staff, right? And while, great respect, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I typically don't use a free way to delineate us as a district, and I think our board members do a great job. While there are sub-districts, they represent, all of our board members do a fantastic job of seeing us as a, as one district, as one unified district. And I do think, in addition to putting some parameters, I think we can do that, I still believe we have to do a better job, and I take some pride in being able to do that, is really encouraging committees and advisory groups to look at the district as a whole, and to see different perspectives, because they do represent the entirety of the district. So I want to also encourage us to think about how we can do that as a governing board. And to, so--
No, I just, I-- No, I, I just, I, I hear you, but, but I think that Ms. Trustee Barrera just said that the entire time that he has been on the board, this has been an ongoing issue. When it's not solved, then you have to come up with ways to solve it. And by stratifying it, because that's what he's talking about, a stratified system, then you, you begin to get at how to, to address those inequities. Because that's what it is. It's inequity when you have schools not represented or communities not represented appropriately. I'll pause here and let Vice President Bazza speak.
Yeah, thank you, Rabbi Whitehurst Payne. I think I agree with Dr. Jackson in that, you know, by using the north of the eight, south of the eight, it, it bothers me because I feel that I'm a representative of the whole district. And when we say that, I feel like it's almost pity-ness against each other. So that, that's a piece of that I don't like, that terminology. I think we can all work together to make this better and turn it to more of a positive, that we're all gonna, you know, work on this, this process and not make it like, oh, you know, us against you or anything. And I think Trustee Barrera's idea about, you know, the makeup of the committee might help. The other thing is also, I think someone mentioned this, but I think training, because as a parent, I've been on some of these committees and, I mean, it's not, you know, sometimes they're putting a lot on the parents. The parents don't always have the knowledge or understand what Title I is. I didn't know what that was or, you know, when I wasn't on this particular committee, but I think they need to understand too, because if we're putting them in a position to actually make serious decisions, we need to make sure that they understand what those are about, because a lot of times the parents are just there to just help, but they don't always know all the specifics and all the details, you know. I mean, I've certainly had to, had to learn a lot of that over the years. And I just had a question is, so for this committee, aren't there representatives from each of the schools? Are we talking about just the leadership that, that doesn't represent? Because there is supposed to be a representative from each school, if I'm correct. Is that right?
And that is the crux of the problem, because as Trustee Barrera just said, his entire time, my entire time, I've been working on this, this very issue. And we recognize that we need representatives from every school. Before we started Zooming and doing all these electronic things, I came before the board and said, can't we find a way so that members from throughout the city can participate in these meetings without having to get in a car that they didn't necessarily have to go over to the meeting, which was at Ballard Center at the time, at six o'clock or 6:30 in the evening with a lot of traffic? So this is not something that's new. We've been working on this. As a result of that, we've had some trainings in, I think Dan Namanga, you can remember his name, in the City Heights community, because the Crawford Cluster and all of those folks, they made it a priority to train the parents. I went to some of their meetings where they were actually training parents about serving on this committee, on the DAC and, and this school site committee. And I know for a fact that the Lincoln Community Cluster worked on it. But even with that, with all of that work that they've done, I, I don't know if you realize how stark it was to have that presentation to come forward when one of the schools said, hey, what's going on here? And we actually pulled that item. Let's just put it out there. We pulled the item because this was such a glaring injustice. And so that should never happen. It's not as if we have not been working on this for years, not just during the pandemic, before the pandemic. We have been working on this very issue. And then for it to come forward as if we've done nothing was very disheartening. And when I say south and north and so forth, you know, the reality is that is where, where the, the need is. And we have to face that fact, that we, we need to put resources in those communities to try to help the students so that, I think Trustee Patterson talked about San Diego Unified being a beautiful school district and the best in the nation. Because if he goes to Duke or wherever in this nation, then he wants to represent a district that is number one throughout the entire city, not just in some parts of the city. That's why I keep bringing this issue up, that I like the idea that Trustee Barrera brought forward about stratifying representation. Because if it turns out that if we say from school communities that have 70% markers, that they'll have so many people serving on the committee, on the, the central committee, the DAC, and then from other communities will diminish the number of representatives so that we can get, we can force the issue to get more representation on that DAC and throughout the district, so that we're serving all the needs of all the children. So, yes, no, maybe so?
I wanted to support what you're saying, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, by sharing an experience I had. I was asked by the Regional Consortium of the Homeless about, I would say now, eight or nine years ago, we were, San Diego was at risk of losing their hearth money there. And when, I was asked to put together a board of directors so that we wouldn't have any, any stoppage in the, in the federal money that was coming to us. I think it was 16 million at the time, maybe a little more. And we were assigned the job to, to create the kind of person we wanted in the position before we sought the person. So rather than saying like, who are the influencers? Who are the this? Who are the people? We had to have a certain number of providers and a certain number of this and a certain number of that. And in that way, it was a much more equitable, equitable system of populating the board. Because we were, we knew that in order to function according to the needs of this particular Board of Directors in the federal government, these seats had to be filled. And you're also a governmental agency. And so perhaps some analysis on sort of what would function to create the equity that you all are, and especially Dr. Whitehurst Payne has just outlined both passionately, but also sharing pain truly about this very issue. So I can, I urge you to continue this conversation to a place where you can create some sort of systems change or paradigm shift. It's not the way we used to think about committees, you know? But I think that in our day and age, there is a shift on like, we need to figure out who needs to be there as much as who wants to be there.
Trustee Patterson.
Yeah, I, I really like the idea. I'll be honest. I just feel a little bit, I, I kind of need to understand a little bit more. I'm just not aware. What's the actual, so in order to get on the DAC, you are chosen by your school site council, is that correct? Okay, so you're chosen by your school site council and can anyone come to the DAC meeting anyway? Or is it specifically, oh, so anyone can come anyways, even if you're not that representative?
It's a board committee, which means that it's public and will follow.
But otherwise, you're, you're participating and you're, you're a general member of the public then who's participating in public comment and you don't get that same.
It's got voting members, yeah.
You don't get that voting power. Okay, understood. In the suggestion, would that be, would, for, for the strategy you brought forth, would that remove the current system where you have one member from each SSC that gets elected to the role? What was, what was kind of the image in that?
I, I don't think that's what you had in mind. Is it, Trustee Barrera?
So, yeah, so what I'm suggesting, so, so right now, and, and somebody understands this process better than I do, but the, is it, is it one representative per school? I'm not exactly, is that, is that right, Dr. Jackson? Yeah. One representative of every school that receives Title I money? Is that the?
And there's an executive committee that does some work and you want to talk a little bit more and?
Yeah, and, and then, and then the body elects its, elects its officers, right? So what I, what I was suggesting is putting some more layers onto the defined makeup of the DAC, which would be, the DAC would, it could be that, you know, at the base, you know, it's one member per every school that, you know, receives Title I money, but then maybe there's, you know, 30% of the DAC membership should come from schools that have 75% or more, you know, free and reduced lunch, something like that. And 20%, you know, down to 50. You know, so, so setting, setting, setting a structure up like that, and I think as, as Rabbi Kosky talked about, what that does is it sets, it, it cuts our work out for us as a district, because it says that's the representation we want to see. Now it's our job to go out and make sure, you know, that we can recruit and train, you know, that membership. And as President Whitehurst Payne is saying, make it possible, you know, for people to attend the meetings and participate in the, in the meetings. But, yeah, it would be, it would be just, you know, creating some, some additional structure to the membership of the, of the DAC that would have as a goal more equitable representation on the membership. And, you know, we could, I assume, also, you know, talk to the DAC about in their bylaws, in their own election of officers, you know, making sure that the officers are representative of, you know, different, you know, parts of the, parts of the district.
I'd like to add to that. So I hear what Richard, Trustee Barrera is saying and, and it makes sense. So it makes sense to me that every school that receives categorical funding has a member on the DAC. Then what could happen is that there's a weight, a weighting factor, that if you have a certain percentage, then you get an additional member. And so that, that would then create a layered structure. So the higher your percentage, so schools that have a 90% or more have an additional voice or a vote at the DAC, might, and then, you know, another, another layer for 75% or higher, but somehow layering the members, the voting membership in a way that would account for schools that have hypers, would allow for representation of those areas that have a high percentage of, of students in the Title I program.
Just before we hear from Trustee Patterson, Attorney Green, is there anything in the bylaws of the federal regs or statutes that would not allow us to do this?
I honestly don't know what their bylaws say, as I sit here. This isn't something I've ever looked at. The statute itself simply says that they shall be elected by the parents of children that are the recipient of Title I funds or compensatory education funds. I think their internal bylaws are something that they adopted or we adopted some time ago. I'm happy to take a look at them. I also want to tell you that they reached out to me recently to ask whether they could continue to meet electronically over Zoom, because they're having much better participation when people don't have to come in. And I took a look at the Green Act, which governs their board meetings, and there's nothing really specific other than it must be a publicly accessible meeting and the public may be, must be able to participate. So I think, you know, in the spirit of that statute, you could argue that an electronic meeting is, allows for public participation. They are attending. And so I don't think that it's prohibited. And I hope that they should probably go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you. And now, Trustee Patterson.
Thank you. Funny you say that, Trustee McQuarrie, that was exactly what I was thinking as well. And then my own one concern to that one, is there an issue with raising what quorum is? I just wasn't sure what that looks like for the DAC. Is there a certain number that they need to hit in order to have quorum? And by expanding it to, by expanding it this, this, to a significantly larger level, does that inhibit them from being able to take action? That was my only initial concern. Otherwise, I really love the idea.
Okay, and that, I'm not sure, Trustee Barrera can?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly what their quorum rules are, but, but I think, you know, Trustee Patterson, I, I think what the past several, you know, years of leadership of the DAC would say to us is, hey, we've always wanted that, but the problem is, you know, we can't get representation, you know, from the schools of, and so, you know, so I think that's, you know, I, I think they would throw out to us that, you know, the challenge of doing something like, you know, what we're talking about right now, may be that, you know, we end up with low participation or we can't meet those goals and, and, but I think that's, I think that's the right conversation for us to have. I think setting the goals and then making it all of our responsibility, including, you know, not just the members of the DAC, but all of us as a district, making that our responsibility to help meet them is right. But I think, I think that would be the concern that, you know, folks would raise, yeah.
And I, I don't know if I saw another hand, but Trustee, Vice President Bazza.
I, I like the idea of we could do the, you know, having the representation, but I agree with Trustee McQuarrie that we should have, still have representation from all the schools, because, you know, I know that Title I is an emotional issue, but whether you're getting 50%, that's still 50% of your kids, or 75% or 95%, those students are all deserving, you know, depending, regardless of the amount that they're getting. And I know it's very, very important to all the schools, regardless of where they are in the district. So I, I'm not, I'm not against having more representation from schools with higher numbers, but just want to make the point that, you know, that all the schools that are getting it, I feel that it is very important to them and they, you know, take that very seriously and, you know, those, the use of those funds.
But that, that's not true, that if you have 50%, if they're 50% from the north of eight, and I'm sorry, I keep using that term, they're, the representation for schools from the south, they may have 75% of the students who are using this program. That's what I'm talking about. If you're.
No, I agree. I agree with, I agreed with you on that. I'm just saying that I feel like we're making it that it's not as important if you're getting less, but I think some of the, those schools, you know, are, feel that it is important. So, you know, I'm trying to make sure that it's valued across the district, not just.
Yes.
In certain areas.
And we do value that. We do the, you know, I hate to do this, but I come all the way back from the beginning of this, when Robert Kennedy and Ted, John Kennedy and all of them came up with the idea of compensatory education. Dr. Bertha Pendleton was one of our representatives here in this, in this district, who became superintendent later. And she worked on meeting the needs of those children who have this special needs. Later, we, we expanded it. And part of the problem is even those students who are being served, a lot of times in other schools, come from the same communities that we're talking about serving. So that part aside, when I said I supported Trustee Barrera's stratification, I think that you articulated the kind of stratification we're talking about. By definition, as I understand it, the DAC has to have a representative from every school. So that's not the issue. So what we're talking about now is for those schools that have a higher percentage would have a weight, higher weight in terms of more representatives or whatever. But even beyond that, I, I take off my hat and say that at the time we talked about this, maybe five years ago, the issue was, is it appropriate to take monies from the DAC, from the district, to get the parents to the meetings out at Ballard Center? Because there was some issue about parents not being able to get there. And they were saying, well, we can or we can't and blah, blah, blah. Well, when you're talking about millions of dollars like this and the need to have representatives from these schools there to vote, then I think that's a small amount of money and we shouldn't really bet an eye about ensuring that those parents are there to represent all of the parents in that community. So that piece doesn't bother me. I think where we're falling short is that in some communities, just a simple email or a simple note is not going to get it. You have to call. You have to do other things. And perhaps we need to hire someone whose sole responsibility is to ensure that we get representatives to the meetings, whatever way they are, whatever the needs are. If it's calling the night before, the day of, to ensure that we have representatives, it's worth it. Even with us, the board members send out links to us and then send links again and links again for us to get on the board meeting, because they value us being here at the board meetings. And so in the same way, if we value our parents there, we'll number. And so in the same way, if we value our parents there, we'll, number one, find out what the obstacles are, and then try to take those obstacles down so that they can be there to represent. That's what I'm talking about. I know, uh, Superintendent Jackson, when I say things like that, he like looks at me and shakes his head and says, oh, no, 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 we're the same everywhere. No, it's not the same. We have some more needs. Yes. Over to you, Rabbi Kosky.
I'm just wondering, trustees, if you want to, um, have the, you, you've said a whole lot here, and I'm wondering if you want to have, uh, the staff under the leadership of, um, Dr. Jackson now take everything you've said and perhaps, um, uh, distill it in some meaningful way. And, um, Dr. Jackson, do you want to, to kind of go, take it from there?
Thank you, Rabbi Kosky. And, uh, actually, um, just for the record, um, I'm not saying we're the same everywhere. What I'm suggesting is that we have to coach and facilitate learning that folks can see that we actually are different, and that we have to see all perspectives. So that, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yep.
So because.
Fine.
Because it, we are. We, we, each site, um, has unique needs and, and we have to respect that. And, and, um, so I, I agree with the conversation. So what I'm, what I'm taking from this is that, um, and, and really, it's making sure that the governing board has representatives that come from different regions, um, within the district. That's one. And then the second one that, um, uh, Trustee Barrera brought up is looking at a process that would look at the composition of the, um, of one, the representatives and also the board, that is, um, uh, based on the percentage of students receiving compensatory funds. And I think those are both, um, part of the process, and I, and, and I would, I would ask for, I, you know, suggest that in addition, we still have to do some training on how to look at our district, district collectively and look at our students and how are we serving the needs. As I said, as I came on, when you brought me on as the interim superintendent, uh, we are going to be unapologetic that we have students that have greater needs, that have historically been marginalized, and we need to pay attention to that. And when we don't, uh, to President Whitehurst Payne's point, we bring documents forward that don't reflect our values, uh, our vision, and our voices. And we have to align all of those. And so that's what I'd like to take forward from this conversation, uh, and begin working with staff, uh, to realize, uh, our values and our, and our vision for the makeup of our, um, advisory groups.
Thank you.
And by the way, I, I see a hand, so, um, I want to put this out there as well. Um, and just in case he's going to say it, I'm going to say it first. We also have to look at how we are, um, seeing our students represented on our advisory groups. So, sorry, uh, Trustee, um, Patterson, I saw your hand, and it reminded me that we, we need to make sure that we're paying attention to our student makeup on our advisory groups.
Right? Because how many students are on the DAC, anyone? Can I, can I, can I get a guess?
Yes.
Yes. Very nice. Big O for one.
Zero.
Zero, correct. There are zero students.
I don't know. Actually, I, I'm going to say I don't know.
No, you are, you are correct. There are not students on the DAC. And if that's not wonderful enough, right, who do we care about? Who are we serving? Let us talk for ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Kosky.
So I think that we are ready. That was a really, Zach, you put the mic drop in that, that item on our agenda, a complete mic drop there. So I think with that, I don't think there's anything more that we should say to that, other than we're learning together. And, um, let's move to, we have two additional items left to, left to discuss. And by the way, I'm just going to show you something because it was taught to be my, a professor of mine, I have a small coaching practice. This is called a KEEQII. I don't know if any of you've heard of it. It's $8, and you can get it, and you can time yourself or time speakers on it. So everybody should, for $8, purchase your KEEQII. Um, and so, while I'm showing you that, and it gives a little beep, but you didn't hear it when it was going off.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my commercial. That's my professional, like, little, uh, tidbit for you this evening. Okay, so let's talk about, um, board member initiatives in relationship to the LCAP and district priorities. If you remember, we've had really a lot of these conversations over the years, um, with our prior superintendent. Um, the board member initiatives and then the relationship to where they fit with the LCAP, and do they need to fit with the LCAP. And I understand that maybe we've drifted a bit from conversations we've had in the past. So I would like to ask, uh, now, uh, Dr. Jackson, are you prepared for this one?
I, I am prepared. Uh, I am, I, thank you, um, for allowing me to speak on this. And, and I think we've had some, uh, great conversations. And, um, I, I think the frame is, I, I really do believe in our vision and what we want for our students. I believe in our, um, LCAP goals and what we've committed to. And I am working to lead our district, uh, collectively, um, to align our budget, um, to that, and to ensure that our priorities are, um, clear, and that, uh, we are committed by, um, by our voice and our funds. Um, one of the things that I, I'm paying attention to is, uh, how we stay aligned on this. And we do have, um, some of the best practices. And, and one of the best practices is that, um, board members, um, certainly play a critical role in, um, helping, um, maintain that, that focus and that alignment. Um, and I recognize that board trustees are out in the community, uh, listening. And what this one says is, um, uh, encouraging board members to avoid making commitments, promises, right? Um, and recognizing that it doesn't prohibit a constructive two-way dialogue with students, staff, and parents, and the community as a means of engaging stakeholders. In addition, it says in number four, we are committed, um, by all board members to know the district LCAP superintendent goals, uh, and the areas of focus. And so what, what I want to bring forward is just a, um, a discussion, uh, that we're all committed to when we do bring, um, individual items, that they are closely aligned to the LCAP. Um, because what, what I start to, um, recognize is that we have so many things. Um, and even when there are dollars, as we know dollars are coming in, they are still limited. We still don't have adequate funding, and we still have to prioritize, and we still have to see that, um, making good on our commitments, uh, is not a one-year strategy. It's a multi-year, multi-pronged approach. And that, um, if we move away from our LCAP goals to bring in new ideas, uh, it takes us off of our core mission. Um, and so that's what I want to introduce, just a conversation and that commitment to, um, maintaining that process. Uh, I, I do certainly, as the interim superintendent, feel a great deal of pressure, uh, to saying yes to everything, um, and yes to everything right now. And, uh, I asked the trustees to help me say yes to everything, um, and yes to everything with a very clear plan, and yes to everything with, um, what things we're doing now, what things we're going to do in the future. Um, and maybe a little, uh, grace to say, um, perhaps that's not aligned to our LCAP and our goals and our vision. So, um, with, with a little trepidation, as Rabbi Kosky probably noted, uh, I, I offer that up to the board to discuss, and, uh, let's see if we can't land on an agreement, uh, to maintain that alignment, uh, when new things are coming forward.
Trustee Barrera.
I, I very much appreciate, uh, Superintendent Jackson bringing this forward. And I, I think this is the core of, you know, this, um, what we're doing now and this notion that we're going to commit ourselves, um, you know, to a process of coherent, uh, governance of the district. It's not, you know, we've talked about this a lot. It's, um, it's certainly not a requirement, uh, that any of us do that. You know, we're all independently elected board members, and, um, it's not, you know, it's, we're not required, uh, to, you know, try to have a coherent functioning district that is clear about its priorities and, and that is effective in making progress on, on those priorities. So it's something that each of us does. In some ways, it's, each of us is surrendering a little bit of, um, autonomy, I guess you could call it, uh, for the purposes of the district actually being able to, to function effectively. And that's why we have governance, uh, you know, policies, and that's why we have these check-ins that, you know, Rabbi, uh, you know, brings us back to all the time. So I think what you're bringing up, um, is, you know, that, that's when, you know, the rubber meets the road, you know, are we actually living according to, uh, you know, this vision of a coherent, uh, uh, district? So what I would say is, um, I think because the board is actively engaged in the development of the LCAP, and I think that the LCAP's goals are, um, front and center, for instance, when we do the superintendent evaluation, um, I, I, I think it's, um, it, it's, I, I think the board has, um, often been clear that what is expressed in the LCAP priorities is a description of what each of our priorities are. Um, because if it didn't, then we would have board members saying, we don't, I'm not going to vote for the LCAP, uh, because I, you know, I have got priorities that are not, you know, reflected in the LCAP. So when we come together, and I believe, you know, um, the last several LCAPs have all been unanimously, uh, approved. I believe that the, um, I, I identified priorities in the superintendent's evaluation have, for the most part, been unanimously approved by the board. I think what it says is, um, we see our priorities individually in this, uh, in this LCAP. But I think that, um, part of the healthy functioning relationship between each of us individually with the superintendent is the superintendent being able, uh, to remind us of that. And, you know, to bring us back to, um, you know, this. So, you know, we've got an idea, we've got people in the community who are excited about an idea, uh, you know, we, uh, call the superintendent and say, hey, can we make this happen? I think what needs to happen at that point is the superintendent needs to be able to say, okay, um, that idea is consistent in the LCAP, and here's how we're carrying it out, and maybe we need to do more of it. And, um, and so let's put a plan together. And it's a plan, as you say, that, you know, um, we have to be able to afford, and so maybe it's something that we can't do all at once, but we, you know, get a, make a plan to get there. Um, or, you know, at times, I think it's, it's the responsibility, um, and certainly the, um, you know, the expectation of the superintendent to say, I don't see that idea in the LCAP, you know, uh, let's talk about that. Let's talk about, um, and maybe it's even, kind of looks inconsistent with the LCAP, you know, and so let's have that conversation. Um, so that, you know, that healthy, honest, um, you know, relationship where the superintendent can push us, you know, as board members and, and, or pull us back to, you know, the agreed-upon LCAP, uh, I think is really, is really critical. And, and then, you know, we all know, I mean, one of the reasons that we, you know, have this, um, policy about board members can't go out and make promises is, um, because none of us have the authority to make promises. None of us individually can commit the district, you know, to anything. And, and, um, and we've had instances, as we know, where individual board members have pretty much said, I'm going to do this, uh, and, and, and then the community gets frustrated because, hey, you, I, we were told by, you know, Barrera that this was going to happen, and it turns out that, you know, it actually has to come to the board as a body, you know, to, to have a discussion and vote. So, um, so I, I think it's, it's really about, I think most of what's in our board, you know, governance policies relates right to this issue, um, the where the superintendent, uh, has to be able to, you know, bring us back, uh, to coherence in our priorities and to, uh, implementation plan, um, that gives us confidence that we're going to realize, uh, those priorities.
Thank you. Next, anybody else want to talk about it? Oh, we all talked out. Uh, Trustee Patterson.
Thank you. Noah, you brought up some very good points. I mean, I can tell you when, when you mentioned that we were gonna, that you suggested we all do budget memos, I was very excited. I was. And I, I mean, I know that sounds weird for me to say I was very excited because there's a lot more things I could be excited about. But nonetheless, I was, I was so excited because of the fact that I feel like I have really kind of rubber-stamped the budget for the past two years. I really feel like every, the votes I cast for our first or second interim, and then we do our final approval, I feel like I'm just saying, great, wonderful. I hear, I hear all of you say, you know, wonderful, great job, and I go, okay, wonderful. That's, that's my role. And to be able to recognize, oh, wait, I really do have this ability to push forward the things that I feel like my constituents elected me on, right? The, the ideals that I know are so important. And I do think it's really important to offer that. And as you mentioned, we give up some of our authority to enter this agreement to where we move forward on consensus, because we want a cohesive district that moves forward effectively. But I think, I know I spoke with Superintendent Jackson, well, multiple times in the past few weeks, where I've gone through a few different initiatives, and I've, and, you know, he, he's told me, look, Zachary, I, I hear you, but this is challenging, because now I have, I think I put seven, eight different things on my, uh, on my recommendation, you know, I'm not great at math, but seven times six, right? It adds up pretty quickly. And what does that mean? That he's going to have 42 different things to work on, and that's really, really challenging. And I think that one of the things he told me is, he wants some direction. I mean, he, he wants some guidance on what that looks like, and as a board for us to look into that framework. Because the issue is, I think of the LCAP, the LCAP's like a buffet. The LCAP is literally every single thing you've ever wanted to do with the school district. I think, I think you would find it difficult to name something in your budget priorities that you couldn't argue wasn't in the LCAP. And to that extent, then it's kind of meaningless, because now there's no priorities, right? Now there's no, these are our seven priorities, which break up into 15 different sub-priorities, which break up into four different staff. Well, now I've already lost myself. Uh, and what I think that means is, we have to find a way to say, this is, this is what we want as a board, and we can keep bringing up these issues. But I, the big point was that I heard, is if we really want something moved forward, then we as a board take a stance that we want that to move forward, and the superintendent knows that that's how we feel. And I don't feel like we have a process to do that currently.
Thank you. Did I see your hand? Uh, Vice President Baza?
Yeah, thank you, President. Yes, I wanted to also make the point that I think anything you bring up as a budget priority, you could, you could argue that it's somehow part of the, the LCAP. So, um, I, you know, I, so that, that is a concern. But what I think is, would be helpful is, and, you know, I think we all know that you, we can't, you can't do everything for us. I mean, I think we're all aware, you know, that their budgets are always going to be tight. Um, but what, what I had recommended, when I've talked to, um, Dr. Jackson, is to look at all the budget priorities that we have provided. And my guess is that, just because I think a lot of us, uh, are on the same page a lot of times in terms of what, you know, what we value, what we think is important, I think there's a lot of things that probably overlap. I mean, I could be wrong on that, because I haven't seen the list from everyone else's, that only, you know, mine. But I, I think we have a lot of, um, you know, there, there's a lot of places where we could overlap. So maybe it's not the exact pet project that I want, but if, if you're looking at the entire list, you, I think we could somehow bring that down to whatever it is you want to do, three or five. Just say, okay, from all of the items you gave us, here's a, um, the. to do, three or five, just say, okay, from all of the items you gave us, here's a, the three or maybe five priorities that have, are kind of floating to the top. So that's kind of what I suggested, because then that takes into account all of us, and then brings up what you, what you also think is most important.
Thank you. Dr. McQuarrie? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm good. So I'm thinking, so, Trustee Patterson wanted to know if there was a process, and, and I believe that there is. So when we, when we determine a priori, so the, I believe we determine a priority when we establish the, for funding, I think in a sense, it is established when we set the priorities for the goal for the superintendent. So at the end of the year, when we do evaluations, we usually sit down and talk about the goals for the, for the next year. And I think that's where some of the, the agreements can be made for setting priorities, and then that would, could determine funding as well. I also agree with Trustee Baso that, that we do, there's probably a great deal of overlap. And I'm thinking that if we could see the merging of those, and maybe it's what Dr. Jackson would have to do, is to find out where we have agreement, and then out of that, we can make a determination about priorities.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you. I, I appreciate this, and yes, in fact, we've done a crosswalk. I'm, I'm not prepared to speak of it this evening. I think there are. And, and, and Trustee Baso, I appreciate the number, because what Trustee Patterson said is 42, there's actually about 53 on the recent input. And, and what you said is, you know, the four or five, I think you're in the ballpark of the alignment. So I won't, I won't, I won't give anymore, but the good thing is, Trustee McQuarrie-
That's a teaser right there, Superintendent Jackson.
That is. I, I set you up right there, right? For the future. So Dr. McQuarrie brought up something that is also critical. And I think one of the things that I'd like to share is there is a rhythm to, or a cadence of when we bring things and when we start working on things. So when we laid out our priorities last year in the superintendent evaluation, we began to start to align and implement those things that require funding, staffing. And so we have to think about that cadence. When does that happen? When we give input at this point, does it mean for this upcoming budget? Are there some priorities that go into this budget? Because I think to, to Trustee Barrera's point, many of the points that you bring up are already aligned. It's just a matter of us, me articulating to you what we're doing. Maybe we need to tweak a little bit, but I appreciate this, this conversation, because what it means is that there is coherence, and there is space for us, when we're meeting in our one-on-ones, to have conversations, to talk about the alignment, and how we're making good on that. And I think my experience is when we're able to do that, you feel better, you're able to communicate with your constituents. We feel great, because we're not spread in so many different ways. And, you know, we're making good on the LCAP, and we're making good on our commitment to be good stewards of, of the budget for our students. And so even though it's brief, I appreciate the dialogue, and I, I see a way forward for us to say, yes, here's, here's what we can do, here's when we can do it, and here's how we're going to be able to do it. And if my job can be to share that with you, I think we're all going to make good on the promises and our commitments that we ran on, and that we work towards each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And I just want to thank, this whole discussion's been good, and I want to say to Dr. McQuarrie, you brought out an interesting point that, well, all of you've said, and it's obvious, you can tie anything to the LCAP that you want to, if you creatively find a way to do so. So having said that, I do like what Dr. McQuarrie said about the fact that when we do the evaluation of the district, the superintendent slash district, we have been known to say, we're missing something here in this evaluation, and to say, although we may not be able to align it very closely with the LCAP, this is something we need to address. And we've been, we've pushed back and said, we want this addressed. And it's worked for us in terms of actually getting an outcome that's beneficial to the district. Thank you all for this discussion, and it's not closed. If in the future we need to talk about it some more, just put it on the agenda, and we'll bring it back up. And having said that, we need to move on to trustee support services. Rabbi Akoski.
Yes, and Dr. Whitehurst Payne, President Whitehurst Payne, this is a subject that you've thought a lot about, and so would you start us off here? And this is our last item. This is the item between now and dinner.
Dinner? Oh, wow.
I thought you were preparing dinner for us, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. We'll be there at what time?
I don't think you'll like it today. It wasn't that good. Anyway, thank you. I'll, I'll keep that in mind for the future. Trustee Support Services, one of the issues that, this keeps coming up, and I'll preface this discussion with the fact that I know the ed code governs, and all the other rules at the state level govern what board members can have and cannot have, or should and should not have. But having said that, one of the things that keeps coming up to, before the city, before even council members, and the mayor, they've said that they can't believe the number of things that trustees handle for schools, and in particular, San Diego Unified in this case, because this board is responsible for, I believe it's close to $2.5 billion a year of operating budget, when you include the monies that we spend for, for all the construction. Our general budget is, what, $1.6 billion? But then you add all the other pieces, anyway. And the fact that we are, there are only five of us, plus our student representative, and he's spread even more, he's spread out further than we are, that there are times when some additional support would be helpful to at least allow us to know when we go to a meeting, what that meeting is about, to do research, to pull background information, et cetera, et cetera. And that requires a lot for a staff of just three people, when they have other responsibilities, like all of these committees, these board meetings, on and on and on. So I wanted to bring it to this board to at least have some discussion about your thoughts around that. It died for a lack of any discussion.
No, no, so, President Whitehurst Payne, so I wonder if we could maybe, do we have some specific ideas about, for instance, adding one or two staff members to the board office, to help board members, for instance, with like, you know, constituent inquiries, something like that?
Yes, and the fact that we now have a student, and Trustee Patterson is quite knowledgeable and has gotten out there and done some things, but that requires additional support from both the superintendent and from the board office to provide his needs and so forth, and just us looking overall at a way that we can provide additional support to the trustees, including the student trustee. Bless you, whoever that was. Yes, Trustee Patterson?
Yeah, no, I'm totally supportive of that. I think about, you know, we're the second largest school district in the state of California, the largest. They're full-time, they're board members, they are full-time employees, and we're not. All of, almost all of us work. One of us is in school, I know it's tough to decide which one that is, but, so yeah, we all have full-time things outside of this role, and I think that's a great point, to say that support from the board office is beneficial. You are right, we're at six members, we were at five before. And I, yeah, I would be totally supportive of the addition of other employ, of other employees in the board office. I definitely think when we look at things like email especially, it's challenging to individually respond, and sometimes it's quality assurance, but a lot of times it, it is to us. It is directly, you know, things that we want to be able to answer, and to have that support, I think would be super beneficial. I know I see Trustee Baso nodding. We've had many conversations about the different emails we've received, and, you know, what should, what should we say to something like this? How to go about that? So I'm completely supportive of it, and I really appreciate you bringing forth the idea.
Thank you. Vice President Baso?
I, I also agree. I think it's an excellent idea. I just don't know, you know, how, in terms of budget, and, you know, how it would actually be worked out in, in the details. But the other thing I wanted to add in addition, not to take away from having that person, when I used to work at the American Heart Association, we had interns come in too. And I know at the city, they do this, the city of San Diego has interns, a lot of times college students or graduate students that might, if you have a specific project in mind, they can even, if they had a program set up at the district already, then it would make it easier, and we, they could assign it maybe those individuals as well to us, to help with different projects we might be working on.
Thank you. Superintendent Jackson?
Thank you very much. And as, and I do recognize the challenges of, of full-time jobs and, and serving, and thank you, thank you for what you do for our students and our staff. I do, would like you to consider the alignment, as we just talked about, with the superintendent. It is as, not our intention, but if there are things that each trustee is asking a staff member to do, right, additional staff, they could be communicating with other district staff. We are your staff, we are, we are here as superintendent's staff to do the work that you're directing me to do, or, or you're setting the course for us to do. So as you're considering that, I, I want to also consider the alignment with the superintendent, chief of staff, and other, other staff members. I think that's, that's very, very important, to stay coherent in the work that we're doing.
And I would say that, I think that you all have been doing a, a good job of trying to stay up with all of our initiatives, and that's why we're now meeting individually, weekly, with the superintendent to bring our items before you. But I think that what we're talking about is a different level of questions that may get into something that, I, I think Vice President Baso brought up a good point. When I was at the university, Cal State U.S.A., Marcos, one of my big things was to supervise thesis, master's thesis for students. And a part of my job was to sit down with students from all over, wherever they were, anywhere in Southern California, and to work through what their desires were, what was interesting in their district, and help them to define what they wanted as their project. So that would be, and I mean, one time I had as many as 20 some odd students, I was supervising their thesis, so I was all over the map with that. And so it would give me an opportunity to help steer them into something that was interesting. But I think board members may have a specific project that they are interested in that's not being conveyed, that would not necessarily align directly with staff having to take the time away from whatever it is they're doing that would need to be accomplished that could benefit the system. For example, if we ask for data, they're good with data, we have to ask staff for that data, versus you could have an intern or someone doing that research without involving taking staff away from what they have to do. That's the kind of thing that I think I'm talking about. Am I making sense, Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, I, I think you are. I think trustee McQuarrie has handed up.
Did I see? He's gone. Oh, he's up here, yes.
I'm here. Yeah, I, I don't always know, when I ask a question, or raise an issue, or bring a problem or a concern forward, how much work is involved? And, and, and who's going to do that work in order to produce the answer? And it usually does go through staff, and usually staff comes back with an answer, and that gets forwarded through, through Board Services office, and then it gets back to me. So what I'm, well, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't always know the work that I generate when I ask a particular question. And so kind of like this discussion we're having right now, I wonder if we can hear from Board Services office about what is their sense? Are they overwhelmed? What would be, what would need to be considered or added in order to make them more effective so that we can be more effective?
Excellent question.
Well, thank you for asking, since you were talking about, talking about our services. I've had this conversation a few times with staff, and staff means me and two others that support all of you. And I don't think that adding people is the answer specifically to what you're looking for. Possibly we could discuss some structure changes, but additional people doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get anything done sooner or faster than what you already are doing. We reached out recently to President Whitehurst Payne to see how we could support her in her presidency, to see if, you know, there was something that we could do that might make her feel more comfortable going out into public and things like that. And I think we've come up with a couple things internally to do. As far as bringing in interns or folks from the outside, I mean, I think it's a possibility by the time we train folks and they understand confidentiality and all of that, they may be in and gone before they're, before they actually can produce anything. But, you know, I'd be willing to have a conversation about structure perhaps. But I, I feel like as far as the workload goes, we're, we're actually pretty good.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for asking. No other hands? No other discussion? Rabbi Akoski, I think people are waiting for that dinner, and they don't want to talk anymore.
Well, friends and colleagues, I really, this was a, sort of a marathon of a Zoom. It's hard to do this much in person, and really hard to be on screen, especially because I bet most of you were on screen the whole day before you came here for this screen. So this, somebody gave me a great name recently, it was Zoom Unity. So our Zoom communities, and I thought that was a really nice thing. And you are a very high-functioning Zoom Unity. Thank you for your service during this time of COVID, for sure. And I think that we brought some really good, both conversation and resolution, and questions to the conversation tonight that, and I, I believe that our superintendent and the staff have a direction for some of the things that they were wondering how to approach based on your opinion. So does anybody need something more to come out of this evening's board governance conversation?
I just want to say, oh, Superintendent Jackson, I just want to say, before we close out, about the piece about South and, and North of the 8, I, I should not, you're right, because Linda Vista has some needs, such as those in other communities, and the Madison community, I understand, has some needs, but it's those heavily impacted communities. So we'll find a different terminology, but ensure that those needs are met. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
And a very good example of learning together, right? Dr. Whitehurst Payne, you are an example for all of us.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. On behalf of our entire district, our board, Rabbi Akoski, I cannot thank you enough. You bring an incredible spirit, an incredible soul, an incredible kindness to the work that you lead and you facilitate. And there is an energy that you bring that helps us be better because we all serve our entire community. Thank you for being that beacon for us and helping us ground ourselves to remain focused on who we are, why we are, and how we show up. Thank you so much, from my heart to your heart, on behalf of all of us.
Oh, my God, my mom just called, and I wished I had, like, answered the phone and just held it up because that was as good as it gets. Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. If you would just write it down so I could just send it to her, I would love it. No, I'm kidding you. So it's always nice when we're old ladies and we're still pleasing our mothers, right? It never goes away.
I want to thank you also, Dr. Akoski, Rabbi Akoski, for your work. And I'm sorry, I see our attorney with her hand up or I saw it. Is it over?
When you're done with your conversation, I have something to tell you that I've been sitting on the entire meeting. So whenever you're ready, you let me know.
Only if it's good news.
The Court of Appeal this afternoon issued a stay of the ruling from the trial court in our vaccine mandate case. So we are free to go forward and institute our vaccine mandate if we can do it from a practical perspective. But the court, the court didn't give us an indication of why. I suspect it's because if they didn't put a stay in it, the case would be pointless because all the kids would already be back to school and not vaccinated. So that was the ruling this afternoon. I'll send, we're going to be sending out some talking points. I was getting some stuff in from Mark while you were all speaking. So good news today.
Thank you for that report. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And again, the thank yous we pass on to you, Rabbi Akoski, for you to wrap it up. Otherwise, I will just end this meeting. Are you ready for us to end it? Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 8, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Happy New Year.